Good, we will resume our meeting at seven seventeen. Welcome Chip, Chip Bassett. We welcome you and we thank you for your interest in the RSU twenty one Board of Director member. We have done a bunch of interviews already, we've interviewed each applicant individually. There's seven questions that we ask and as you speak, we will more than likely be taking notes as you speak. If there are members in the audience, so there are plenty of members in the audience. We are not entertaining any questions or any comments from members in the audience during the interview. Once your interview is done, you're free to stay as a member of the general public. Once all the interviews are complete, a select board will continue on with their normal meeting. The last agenda of our meeting is executive session to discuss all of the interviews. We intend to come out of the executive session with an identified individual. At such time, hopefully a motion will be made to appoint this individual. Lastly, this is a role not to be taken lightly. It is a huge commitment. You may become an RSU Board of Director member that will serve in the best interest of the children of Kennebunk, Kennebunk Port and Rundle. Prior to taking a seat on the board, you'll be asked to read and accept RSU twenty one policy BCA, which is Board of Member Code of Ethics. Please read this document thoroughly and understand its intent. With that said, we'll start the questions at the end, Chip. We, it would be an opportunity for you to ask any questions that you have of the board, okay? Knowing that this is an interim position, why did you volunteer your services?
As I think the board is probably aware, I actually volunteered in a similar situation two years ago in twenty twenty one. I am interested in serving a Rundle and the citizens of the town. I am semi-retired, but alive and kicking. And this is something I think is a challenge. I was involved in two thousand sixteen in the efforts to keep a Rundle in the RSU. So this isn't something that just popped into my head last week. It's something I've been interested in. And I think it's a, it's a good fit based on my experience.
And you may have reiterated this, but what motivated you now?
Well, I'm, I've already got my petition squared away to, I'm running for office for the election in June. And so having an opportunity to start sooner would be great.
Tell us a little bit about your previous, previous public contributions, if any, even if they are not related to the town of Rundle or RSU twenty one directly.
Okay, well, I would, I would start with my current service on the TIF Capture Cost Review Committee. Last year and the year before, I served on the Charter Review Committee for Rundle. In two thousand eighteen, I worked with some of you guys on this Street Design and Construction Standards Committee. From two thousand sixteen to two thousand eighteen, I served on the Rundle Planning Board. And two thousand, for the fiscal year two thousand seventeen, I was selected as Vice Chair of that board. And for the last year, I was Chairman of the Planning Board. I've already mentioned that I was an active participant in the Citizens Committee when there was a movement to have Rundle withdraw from the RSU. And was very pleased that we were successful in avoiding that. I think it would have been extremely costly for the town and wasn't practical. So that, I think shows, having moved back to town in two thousand fourteen, I think that shows that I've been, since I've been here, I've been pitching in when I had an opportunity. I also am on the Economic Development Committee, but we haven't met for the last seven years. So I'm not sure that counts. Previously, my professional experience, I think it gives me some unique qualifications for this position. I was an investment banker and then a consultant in municipal finance for twenty eight years. And I had a subspecialty in regional entities. And it may not seem like it to, at first glance, but there are common problems. It doesn't matter whether it's a school board or a regional jail or a regional landfill, regional water and sewer, I've worked with all of those, not just pre, not just existing entities. But for example, I put together the very first financing for a regional radio system in Commonwealth of Virginia. And that involved working with four counties and two cities, which I think had been arguing since sometime in the seventeenth century. And, and we got it done. And so I think that regional experiences is pretty unique. I'm extremely familiar with fund accounting. You, anybody who knows normal accounting knows that governments do things differently. And that's something that I got a lot of familiarity with. I worked with the major credit rating agencies, Moody's, Standard and Poor's and Fitch for hundred different clients, maybe more, at least a hundred and fifty different financings. And so I understand credit impact, debt capacity, financial management policies. And I think that that aspect of my experience is very important. The two committees that I would like to serve on are the Facilities Committee and the Finance Committee. If, if that's possible, not entirely clear on how committee assignments happen with RSU twenty one, but that would be my, my long-term goal would be to serve on, on those committees. Budgeting and capital improvements planning is something I I helped localities with for twenty eight years, so it, that's up. I would be able to hit the ground running in, in those areas.
Okay, um, what is your understanding of your role as a member of the RSU twenty one Board of Directors?
My understanding is that as a board member, it's to represent the parents and students within the regional school unit. Kenny Buck, Kenny Buck Port and Rundle. As Rundle's representative, I think there's also a particular focus. And that's one of the mentioned experience with regional entities. That's, that's a balance that has to be struck. It can be challenging, I think I know how to do it between serving the local government that, the town of Rundle in this case, but having the broader perspective of serving the RSU as a whole.
What knowledge and skills do you bring to the board? I know you've said some already, but what knowledge and skills you bring to the board?
One thing I didn't mention is that I have direct experience with state financing programs, both the literary loan fund and the Virginia Public School Authority, both advising and working with them at the state, at the source of the funding. But also I helped, I literally don't know how many communities get financing through those two programs. So I know the main bond bank is, is different. I've studied it some and how it works. But if the school board needed financing, needed to evaluate different financing sources, whether it be a bank loan or a note or, or the bond bank, that's something I'm eminently qualified for.
What do you think it will take for you to become an effective and successful school board member?
In, in what context? I know how to, I know how to read, write and listen. And sometimes I talk.
So are there any specific skills that you feel you have that will help you become effective and, and be a successful board member?
I think my ability to analyze financial statements, capital improvements, planning budgets, and, and also look at financing in terms of whether it's cash flows or project costs would be immediately helpful.
What issues do you see as major priorities for the school board?
I don't have any specific issues in, in mind right now. I know the decision's already been made to move forward with the expenditures for the track and field project at Kenny Buck High School. I know that, that was a situation where the school board had over five million dollar surplus due to COVID lockdowns and COVID relief monies. And I'm not about to judge whether or not the project that the Facilities Committee and the Board ultimately selected was the right one. But I don't believe that, that they ever considered using those funds to lower the contributions from the three localities. And I think that that's something that should have at least been talked about.
Can you make the necessary time and commitment to serve on this board?
Yes, sir.
So here's your opportunity, Chip, to add any additional information about yourself that you feel may help with this board knowing you a bit better and if there are any questions that you have for us.
I think I've covered everything that I really wanted to, other than my motivation to, I most certainly do have the time and willing to put in the effort. I know that this is a time-consuming position. And it's a challenge that I would welcome. They, I'm a part-time farmer, as you all know. But that does not occupy my brain very well. It, it's very enjoyable, but I, quite frankly, I need an intellectual challenge and this would be super.
Very good, well, we thank you for your time. At this particular point, the board will, will close all of its interviews. We will continue on, we have, I think only just one more item left, actually a couple of items. We will continue on with those and then we will move into executive session after that. So the next item on the agenda is discuss, yeah, discuss Article nine, Section nine three one of Land Use Ordinance on accessory apartments with resident Mr. Inzorillo. You're free to step on up and introduce yourself.
Good evening, my name's Alan Inzorillo, I live on, sorry, sixty-four Rodeo Drive, Rundle resident. So I would like to bring attention to the issue of wastewater treatment requirements in the context of accessory apartments. And hopefully present my suggestions through whatever process is necessary to bring to town vote a change in the current language. Specifically, I would like to amend one of the provisions of Section nine three one of the Land Use Ordinance Accessory Apartments. Currently, the language reads, the accessory apartment may be located either in the principal dwelling unit or as a separate structure, provided the accessory apartment shares the septic system with the principal dwelling unit and onsite well-shared with principal dwelling unit where public water is not available. This might be a viable and practical option in some cases, but in others it is certainly not. I think in most cases it actually won't be. In most circumstances, there are too many obstacles that will make it possible, make it impossible or extremely expensive for landowners to achieve compliance. Examples include tree removal, ledge blasting, and even removal of existing structures that are in the way. A landowner might not even have room for the leach field expansion if they're already maxed out on setbacks from property lines. If the ADU is a separate structure, digging, trenching would be required for pipe connections, again involving all the various aforementioned obstacles. And most septic leach fields with any age on them will have to be expanded or completely redone or enlarged in order to handle the increased living space and meet code. In cases like mine, which must be numerous and not specific to my property, it makes more sense to put in a separate septic system to avoid unnecessary costs and detrimental environmental impacts. I have a building apartment for a thirty by twenty-six garage with a second floor ADU. It is a separate structure from my existing dwelling. The site is already cleared and I have a, the space, the setbacks, a positive soil test and a design to build a separate septic system that is a gravity-fed of stone and pipe adjacent to the new garage. Under the current ordinance, the town is requiring me to connect into my existing system with a holding tank and pump system. This will require me to dig and blast about two fifty to three hundred feet or more, cut a bunch of trees on my property line, that's the last buffer I have to another property, move several gardens, chicken coop and shed, storage building, cut extra trees and construct a temporary road across my lawn to gain access to the existing leach field, to name a few obstacles. The estimated cost for the new system, the new system to be built on the new site would be seventeen thousand. The estimated cost to connect to my existing septic system and expand the old leach field is twenty-four thousand nine hundred dollars, not including the cost of blasting because we don't know how much we'll incur, which we will. I'm not exactly sure of the reasoning behind this existing ordinance provision, but it is clearly flawed. I've heard it, it is to, to prevent people from splitting their lots, to prevent housing sprawl, but there must be other ways to accomplish this goal. I am not versed in all the laws and rules, so I'm not sure how that would keep one from splitting their lot. My lot borders two large parcels of land. One is being prepared for development and the other is on the market and advertised as a developer's dream. So it seems a little odd that the town is worried about lot splitting. All this being said, this seems like a very archaic ordinance and one that under practical current execution serves little to no purpose, other than adding an unnecessary cost and destruction to an average property's owner, owner's already expensive investment. In speaking with a very experienced septic designer who has worked around the state for many years, Mark Hampton, Rundle is the only town where he has encountered this ordinance. He has written an attached letter at my request. In situations that apply, I feel it would, it would help people exorbitantly to change the language of this ordinance to allow for separate septic systems, both from a financial and practical standpoint. After all, the ADUs are supposed to be helping families and people by creating affordable living spaces. Why burden them with unnecessary costs and environmental impacts if not absolutely necessary? So thank you for that. And then I have a letter written by the septic designer. And, you know, he goes through kind of the, what's going on in Maine currently as far as the septic laws for the ADUs and he said, to my understanding, this is that currently the town of Rundle requires that all wastewater flows from ADUs must be directed to the disposal field of the primary dwelling unit. Depending on the age of the existing disposal field, this may require a complete rebuild of the whole disposal bed. And in some cases setbacks requirements may not allow the disposal field to be reconstructed in the same location. I've been a licensed site evaluator in Maine for nearly thirty-five years and designed between three to four hundred septic systems each year. In my experience, the town of Rundle is the only town that I'm aware of which, of this requirement. And in my professional opinion, this requirement is unnecessary and outlined in the rules. And in fact, results in an increased cost to property owners. And then I have a little map of, just to give you a, you know, just a practical visual on, on what I have to deal with or what other people would have to deal with versus just building, you know, a new, a new septic if possible on the, on the new building site rather than, you know, blasting and expanding the new septic and all the different kind of obstacles that are in my, in my, in my case. And then I have a letter from Mr. Bruce Reed, attorney. He just wanted to say that, dear board members, I'm writing on behalf of my client, Alan Inzorillo, who is on your agenda for tonight's meeting. I understand he's provided you with a copy of the memo that he recently submitted to the planning board along with a letter from soils evaluator and scientist Mark Hampton, who has also been working with him. Alan's request is a simple one. He's aware that the planning board is proposing amendment to your land use ordinance covering accessory dwelling units. And he proposes to add language that would permit people in situations such as his, the option of installing a freestanding wastewater disposal system as opposed to connecting to an existing system. To me, this is a very logical request and language could be drafted in such a way as to prevent any concerns regarding environmental density and subdivision matters. At his last appearance before the planning board, several members were absent and his request was not permitted to move forward. Realizing that time is tight to get land use amendments on the June thirteenth town ballot, Alan's request is that the board, after reviewing his submissions, direct that this matter return to the planning board with instructions to make a formal vote. I anticipate assisting Alan in drafting appropriate language prior to the May fifth meeting. Thank you very much.
Any comments from the town manager or board members? Any questions for Mr. Inzorillo?
They did, but there was members missing and it was a, a very quick. Yeah, there wasn't much deliberation, it was a very, very quick. Uh, yes, the, the, Mr. What was it? Yes, the, the, the committee director. Uh, there was a vote to, to vote for, you know, to pass it along. And then very quickly, before anyone could second it, he shut it down and
I think the issue, Tom, was that they felt they didn't have enough time to put this on the warrant. That's what I gathered, but.
That's what, yeah, that's what he felt that it was not enough time, so they, they moved on from it, but. I would feel like it's a couple of months before the vote, I would imagine there could be a discussion and some language produced to add to that, it doesn't seem like it's too crazy, but. I will, I haven't, but this, this was my next step to come to you guys and then, and I will definitely reach out, you know, tomorrow if, if that's something that, that can be done. Yes, yes.
I mean, they, they would have to have a public hearing, but it's gotten close, but I, this, I think there's still time. I may have to pull out the calendar and look at it, but I.
Yeah, I don't know how much time is remaining in terms of it, but yeah. I know that they're talking about the subject matter, I saw their agenda today and I think I, I don't know if I provided you a copy on your desk or not, but they'll be talking about it at their next meeting again. So with Alan going to the meeting and perhaps taking some comments from here tonight as well as whatever I can shed to the planner after this meeting, perhaps that will help them when they meet on the, on their next meeting as to what they're going to do. If they're gonna look at it again or not. But it may be important for you folks to at least provide them your thoughts that I can send along to them if you'd like.
May I ask a quick question? I, I'm under the understanding that you are to direct the planning board for their directives, so is that, am I not?
Who, me as manager?
No, just a general, the Select Board is a group. The direct conduit to advise the planning board to, 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 to do things.
Well, not necessarily, usually the planning board comes up with their own ordinance changes and provisions. They do bring them forward to the Select and from time to time, I know that the board has had some concerns. I think the last time was the street design, construction ordinance where they felt that the board was, was so overwhelmed with other issues that they actually took that on to themselves and created a committee and worked on that. So they have done that before, but I think they tried to allow the, the other appointed officials through the planning board to do their due diligence, so.
Okay.
And work through that.
Excellent.
You are correct.
Yeah, I think they had already worked on, I believe they had already worked on this ordinance when this came up. And I don't think they wanted to revisit it again, from what I had gathered. I wanted to go back and look at the meeting when it happened, I just haven't had a chance. But I have had some discussions with a few of the planning board members on it and, you know, the issue of, you know, housing sprawl and there was issue, you know, both why they, why the ordinance was written that way, but geez, a mandate from the state kind of is kind of too intuitive to that anyway. They want you to, you know, they want you to increase density, so it just doesn't make sense from my perspective, but. I mean, I certainly support. Going back to the planning board, I think there's, there's time to do, we'd have to look at the calendar, but I certainly think there's time to get it done and.
Oh, it's the eighteenth? Of this, of this month?
Yep.
Okay.
Next, next Tuesday.
So I will, I will, I will request to be on the agenda for the eighteenth.
Well, they have a discussion on it on the eighteenth.
Oh, they are.
Yeah, so that may be a good time for you to go and maybe Bruce and you can come up with some language changes that you would like to propose to them.
Okay.
And I don't know, I'll get the sense of the board here to see if they think it's appropriate to at least delve into that septic issue again.
Okay.
Yes, I think they should.
Yeah, I mean, if there's time to get it done, let's look at it again and try to get it done, if there's time, I, I.
Okay. Excellent, and may I ask your name, sir? I'm sorry, you don't have a.
Well, you met, you met with me, you talked to me today, I'm Keith Treffelen, I'm the town manager.
Thank you, yeah. I'm sorry, you just don't have a name.
No, I try to stay incognito.
You know what, we're gonna have to work on that. Any other comments, concerns from the board? Jack?
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much for your time.
Yep.
Thank, thank you.
Appreciate it.
There you go. Yeah, maybe review on what you're, have to look at it again. We can right now.
Jack Reese, uh, uh, first of all, I just wanted to express my thanks to the several people who are interested in serving the kids of Arundel and Kenny Buck, Kenny Buckport. It's a really important job, and, and uh, the turnout is great. Uh, actually, I, I have some comments. Uh, some forty years ago, I had uh, somewhat similar experience. I had uh, uh, bought a home with a unknowingly with a septic system failing. And ten years later, I had to replace it. And uh, I was doing that in the course of uh, expanding my home to uh, have an in-law apartment. And uh, ran into lots of difficulties, not the least of which was uh, the fact that uh, the septic, the location of the septic system uh, was right near a stream running through there, underground that I didn't know about. And so uh, I had to relocate the leach field uphill of the house. And with the associated pumping equipment and all, and as a young homeowner, I really struggled financially to uh, make that all happen. And it wasn't until I moved to Maine that I became debt-free. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Okay, um, so at this point, I will um, entertain a motion to go into executive session for MRSA four oh five subsection six. Paragraph A, discussion by select board members on appointment of resident to serve on RSU twenty-one school board. Motion by Velma, seconded by Jason. Any other discussion? Okay, we will go into um, executive session. Hey, we reconvened.
Make a motion.
I were here. I make a motion. We come out of executive session under blah, 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 with no action taken. Yes.
Well, all those, all those, all those numbers and, yeah.
Got a motion by Velma.
Yep.
Seconded by Jason.
Yeah.
Um, all those in favor?
And that was uh, um, let me check the time. Eight oh four. Thank you.
At eight oh four. Eight oh three PM. Um, I will say that um, I will thank all of the individuals. Um, this was um, this, this was pretty awesome. We have some really, really good candidates, and um, yeah, I think it's great. And for those that don't get it, we can only pick one. Certainly encourage you. I know you've taken out papers, but um, certainly encourage you to move forward because it's new blood, and I, I think that's pretty awesome. We like to see that. Okay, um, so coming out of uh, executive session, looking for a motion on an appointee.
I move that we appoint Brittany Gerst to undertake to uh, fill these vacant seat uh, to the RSU director, RSU twenty-one board directors. And unfortunately, it can only do that for one of you.
Yep.
Too bad.
Okay, we have a motion by Tom, seconded by Jason. Um, any other discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Uh, welcome, Brittany. Wish you the best of luck. And as I previously stated to the others, uh, to everyone, um, boy, there's some good candidates here, so please continue on and, and move forward come election time, because we could certainly use your new blood. I think that's awesome. Okay, um, she needs at some point in time, get with you or with the school.
With the school. I'll send an email over to the superintendent tomorrow morning, or maybe tonight before I leave. Let her know that you've been um, selected, and hopefully they'll get in touch with you and do all the other things they need to do. Congratulations. And I really appreciate you all showing up. This is great. It's really nice to see.
I do have a question. I hope you're not all running for the same position. That, because there's two, there's two positions open, and, and we'd like to have some, some, you know, somebody run for, for both positions so that we'll know that they'll get filled. Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, anybody else got anything else? Jason, you're up. Motion by Jason, seconded by Phil. All those in favor? Motion carries. We are adjourned at eight oh five PM.